Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for Thursday's meeting?
I still move.
Second to last, sir. Any further discussion of that?
I'm going to take this night chair. Oh, because I feel like I'm too...
It's too old.
Yeah, I feel like I'm too old. This chair, I can be five.
Okay. Where do you want to start?
Good morning.
We've got a lot of stuff in these, don't we?
Well, let's... Is there anything on the... Other than the number 11 and sales tax issue, anything on the sideways list you'd like to talk about? So, you know, I looked at that. I have no updates, nothing to report. And the correspondence list was... Oh, the important thing. The hospital would like some documents signed.
Sign the contract.
Apparently, after 25,000 lawyers looking at that amended lease, it was discovered by bond counsel, because they're in the middle of some refinancing after paying off the hospital's debt, that the lease, the multi-year lease, was not recorded and that the signatures were not notarized on that lease. Thus, they're asking for two documents to be... And their bond deal is supposed to close October 1st, which is like Thursday. So, that's the time of the essence. They're asking for signatures on two things. One, a memorandum of the lease, just so that your signatures can be notarized. And what we call an affidavit of fact relating to title. I don't know if you remember, we did something like this back in McElrath. Properties in McElrath that the county owned were not titled in the right name. And so, we got them in the right name by doing this affidavit of fact under this revised code section. So, this is a typical way of correcting a deed when it's almost a Scrivner's error or an error that is not of any true substance. But mostly, this is for the purposes of getting this recorded. Thus, they're asking for your signature on the memorandum of the lease and that would have to be notarized and on the affidavit, which would also need to be notarized.
Should we do that right now?
I would ask you to. And then, if you can give me the original documents today as I leave, because they're sending a courier to pick them up this afternoon.
Do we do this through a journal entry or do we do...
I think a journal entry would be fine.
Instead of a resolution?
Pardon?
Will you notarize, Martin?
Sure.
Just while we're waiting for that, out of curiosity, under the purchase, you know, terms of option to purchase, it said the proceeds, if they ever did purchase, anything would go to the Robinson Memorial Hospital Foundation or, if no longer in existence, its successor organization. Is that still in existence?
I don't know. I don't know if the foundation... I'm sure there's some sort of foundation with respect to the hospital, because most hospitals groups have some sort of fundraising activity going on.
There would be... The fact that UH has it now, is that a gate that foundation or they have their own foundation?
You know, I have no idea. I'll have to... I'll give Steve a call and ask him that question.
And someone was asking me, should UH decide to relocate or sell, what would the county do with all that, those facilities? They would become...
You mean, example, if they chose to sell and like not use it as a hospital anymore?
Yes. If they didn't use it as a hospital, would it not revert back to the county?
Well, it's a lease, so it would always... The property would always revert back and the buildings would revert back to the hospital.
Exactly. The county would have all those buildings.
It's like a 50-year lease.
No, for... This person, I shouldn't even go there, said...
If UH decided, "We don't need this hospital anymore."
They felt UH would eventually build out where the OMed is. Now, this was one of those, somebody sees you and they're giving you their scenario and opinion. So, he said to me, "What would the county do with all those buildings?" And I said, "I don't have any idea. Would you like to buy it?" But if they didn't, if they did that, then we would be in the building business, right? They would be our building?
Well, you can either sell them as no longer needed or figure out another function. Now, who knows what office at the time would be interested in?
That's...
Or needing them. Perhaps your administration building will be defunct by then. And who knows?
By then?
I'm assuming that isn't going to happen for 15 or 16 years.
No, 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 no. I'm sure it isn't going to happen.
You think it's defunct now? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Thanks for answering.
The second thing on my list to talk about, because both Todd and Ryan are here, was to review this MOU, or proposed MOU with the 911.
Yeah, there was some confusion about that, Denise. And I'm sure you've heard about the confusion. That's why you're going to discuss it.
The confusion... The issue is, as you know, we need to update our equipment, our 911 equipment. It's woefully like falling apart, as in, they're on time and material, which is costing not only the sheriff but everybody else a lot of money. And therefore, we need to update. And that's why, a couple of weeks ago, the planning commission...
Planning committee.
Committee.
911 committee.
Committee met and did agree to pursue the 911 or they wanted the AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T wants a single signature on the contract, which makes sense to be the county. The county, of course, wants assurances that it can pay for that and will not be stuck with the bill. This MOU, then, that we propose for the various PSAPs would be that their government assistance fund, that wireless 911 money that's out there that we all... That's already distributed to the PSAPs, that the county would retain all of that money to pay that AT&amp;T contract. If there was a deficiency, that money wasn't enough, this MOU says the political subdivisions would agree to pay for that deficiency. My formula or what the formula you come up with was pro-rated share of the number of telecommunications. Telecommunicators are those who take wireless 911 calls, as opposed to all the other 911 calls and dispatch calls. So, if I have two telecommunications, and let's just say I'm Robina, I have two and there's 10 in the entire county, I would pay two tenths of that deficiency. That's the idea. On the other hand, if there was a surplus of funds, I would get two tenths of that surplus. That's how this reads. That's the purpose of this. It has not been distributed to the political subdivisions, although we mentioned it to them at the planning committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. So, I just wanted to... Wanted to run this by you and get your okay for us to send it out to the subdivisions and their law directors, just to get the ball rolling.
You know, Denise, that's exactly what I understood it to be. But didn't there come up a point, Todd, that you were talking about?
Right.
That that wasn't the... I mean, that's the way I understood it, what you just said.
We were... Back when we were in the... You did bring something up.
There's Kent State through the curveball... Not a curveball, I should say, because Kent State's never said this, but that they want the 911 funds to cover, which is how this MOU is written. They want it to cover their costs should they remain a wireless PSAP. The key for the county to understand is that eats into what we thought was once our own block balance. And I just wanted to make the sheriff and the commissioners aware of that aspect. There's a caveat in the law, if you will, that all 911 equipment costs have to be covered and certified before you can get paid personnel costs. And because of that caveat, there's not a whole lot we can do if there's a single... If it's a single lot to do with the contract and a single lot to do with the funds.
Does that have applicability for the fact that the sheriff uses that money?
It could.
Dispatch?
It could.
Because that's a huge expenditure.
Well, but it is an expenditure that we had anticipated needing to reduce anyways.
But is it covered? And therefore, when we get into the situation where we don't have enough money and what's the realification of that if you say we lose?
The way I drafted this MOU, the 911 contract with AT&amp;T would be covered first. That contract gets paid with this money first. So, yes, it's possible that any one of those subdivisions, including the sheriff, would no longer be able to expend its 911 money on personnel costs.
Okay.
That's what the law says they have to do, first of all. You have to pay your 911 costs of equipment, software, hardware, all of those things first before you can pay anything for personnel. Right now, we have a surplus. But if we... And I'm not... It's a little bit speculative as while we don't have hard numbers. We have good numbers, but not hard numbers, of what AT&amp;T is going to charge us. We kind of know, but I guess we never know until we actually are paying the bill at the end of each year. So, there could be a surplus for which personnel costs can be paid. But in the likelihood there isn't, yes, that's going to be a hole in everyone's...
Oh, my gosh.
See, the sheriff is under the impression, I think, that there's going to be a separate contract with them because of those personnel costs.
I don't see how you get all the other PSAPs to agree to this if there's a separate one for the sheriff and he gets treated differently.
Remember, the sheriff, I know emphatically he was saying, "I have to have that money for dispatch."
Cannot... But again, if you answer... Even if we... There might be a surplus, but if not... If the 911 update takes all of that money, whether it's the county share, Aurora share, Streetsboro share, it takes all the money, there would be nothing left for personnel.
Whoa.
If you entered into the contract by yourself with a 911, okay? And you were just paying this. Let's use that as an example. And all of your money got taken up, all of this government assistance fund money was taken up by that contract, there would be a hole in the personnel budget for...
And I understand that. You're right. There's no question. But I... My question comes back to, the sheriff has been relying on that money for dispatch. What... How much a year goes towards dispatch? Or that...
About 200?
Currently, 150,000.
150?
Of his dispatch is paid out of 911. We had always recognized, though, that that pace could not continue indefinitely. In effect, next year, there was always an intention to step it back because we knew we had to buy the new equipment.
Well, but there was the intention. How cognizant is the sheriff of that?
I know. I've told him. I've told Denise.
A couple of weeks ago, didn't we?
Yeah.
And the sheriff, I believe, feels he will have that money.
The sheriff's main concern, I believe, is that he needs the people. I think his fear is if 911 can't pay for it, he doesn't intend to cut those people. I think that's his biggest concern of voice, is that those people still need to pay it out of somewhere, in which case it'll be the general fund. And that, that we are prepared to pay.
That's 150,000 the general fund would have to come up with.
Whoa.
I mean, it would... I mean, it's that or don't update the neck of this equipment. And I think we're at a...
No, that's not a choice.
Yeah, that's not a choice.
This contract is because we're reducing the PSAPs to three or four.
Correct. It's for two reasons. This contract would have nothing to do with reducing them at this point. It's more for paying for that AT&amp;T contract. The reduction in the number of PSAPs isn't going to change the amount of GAF money that is given to Portage County as a whole, whether it's Portage County Board of Commissioners or all of the political subdivisions. It's not going to necessarily reduce in the PSAPs. That money's just going to go to a different PSAP as opposed to the six we have or the five we have. So, that amount of money isn't going to change. You're going to get the same amount of money. It's just a matter of putting that money towards the AT&amp;T contract and everyone agreeing, because right now, your plan says Aurora gets X amount, Streetsboro gets X amount, Portage County gets X amount for the sheriff. What this would say was, all of those Xs get combined, pay for the AT&amp;T contract. Once that's paid for, we'll redistribute those amounts to the various political subdivisions, from which they came. And again, our... My goal here was merely to get this and get your okay, to get this out to those political subdivisions. I'm sure the conversation is...
You know, I don't have it on today's agenda and I don't have the copy of it. Is it the same as the copy we have before?
We added the... If there is a... We added the portion that says if there's an excess, it will be redistributed. But I can get this to you.
Well, the only thing I want to be sure is that it will get all the money and then if that doesn't cover the costs, the extra would be prorated and they would chip in for it.
That's what I want to be sure is there. And it's certainly fair to say if there's an excess, that would also be redistributed.
Right. Because at the meeting that we have, there was some objection to that. I wanted to be sure.
Right. And there is some concern that... Or some conversation, I should say, that some of the dispatchers are... Dispatchers are also answering non-wireless 911 calls.
That's where an issue comes up.
Okay? This money isn't... Is from wireless 911 phones. It's not supposed to be spent on anything but wireless. So, it makes sense to go for your AT&amp;T contract and the rest redistributed to the telecommunications that are answering wireless calls. I realize it's probably the same human being. I'm a dispatcher. I'm answering all the calls. It doesn't matter whether it's wireless or non-wireless. I'm going to answer the call and send out the appropriate first responder. I don't really check...
But there's no money for non-wireless.
There's no money for non-wireless. So, this contract wouldn't affect. I mean, you can get a PSAP that's going to say, "I'm going to keep my non-wireless 911." That's fine.
Well, I'm comfortable with you sending it.
Yeah. This isn't asking for your signature or anything. It's just to start the conversation with the other.
So, they can respond to that?
Right.
Sure.
So, I'm... Okay. But that's... But I can do that. All right. Now, the exciting conversation regarding the sales tax. What part you want to talk about?
Well, if you could go over our options, that might be helpful.
Option one is... Thank you, Ryan. One option, of course, is to, within the body of... And I'm going to take what I think is the simple option first. Including... Yeah, well, it gets more complicated. But keeping the... This money that is... This money is for an additional quarter percent of sales tax, which will be used for the... It is for the general fund under 5739-026-A3, to be exact. Obviously, it's a general fund. You can spend it on anything. You want to spend it on, at this point, administrative... Criminal and administrative justice services, the rehab centers and the pod at the jail, et cetera, et cetera. The issue was, do we put that in the body of the resolution? There was some concern that putting by both the CCAO and the attorney for the tax commissioner that you shouldn't put it in the body of the resolution, that you can make that as a separate journal entry that you pledge that that's what you're going to use the money for.
And is that because of lawsuits that could...
Well, 026 doesn't talk about administrative justice services. It's a separate...
In fact, there is a separate section for tax that does allow that. So, the idea was it might be confusing and therefore, might lead to lawsuits, right?
Yeah. It's... Yeah. And yeah, under 021, you can use it for that specific purpose. But we've already maxed ourselves out at 021.
And you talked about that journal entry. Exactly what would that journal entry be?
That the Board of Commissioners pledges to the voters of Portage County that they will expend the monies raised for the additional sales tax on criminal and administrative justice services.
And we consider this an emergency. Is that correct? Could that be in the journal entry?
It could be if we wanted it to be. Yeah.
Not to, but I would...
Next year's board could change that. You know that.
Well, any board. I mean, let's face it. You know, you want to hear me say about the buck stopping and starting here, but that guarantees nothing.
Yeah.
That guarantees absolutely nothing. It's back to being... It goes into the general fund. A Board of Commissioners is the appropriating authority. They can allocate that money out of the general fund for any and all purposes that are covered under the Ohio Revised Code. And my specific problem with this is in the attempt, given the public hearings, is trying to deceive the public as to what... I don't think there's any question as to how we are...
Do we make it an emergency, yes?
Right. And yeah, that's another excellent point. I think, you know, I don't want to plagiarize what you said, but I will. You had said something about, why would we impose this tax?
If it's an emergency.
If it wasn't an emergency. So, that gets me back on point. I would think... I would want it to be an emergency.
Okay.
But you're saying the journal entry has no teeth, has no...
No.
The journal entry... Well, it doesn't. I mean, the same exact thing was done in 1988 when they raised the sales tax under 021.
They imposed it then?
They imposed it then... Well, that was to a vote. But they did pledge to use that additional money at that point was to update buildings within the county. Okay? As opposed to these rehab services. But the same thing was done. And obviously, you're using that money for lots of different things. You know, so am I using it for updating buildings.
Is there an acceptable way? I saw from your email that you drafted this, all these options, without an emergency cost. Is there an acceptable way to have an emergency? Just be able to declare an emergency and get this done?
Yeah. That was the next thing.
I'm sorry.
If we take out the administrative justice, criminal language out of the resolution, that eliminates that. Okay. The next then conversation is, do you want it as a non-emergency or an emergency level? I have both drafted. The ones I sent out to you the other day was non-emergency. Doesn't have to be... Has to be by a majority of the commissioners. All the other details are the same. You've had the public hearings. You have to get to the tax commissioner by October 26 for it to be effective January 1st. Everything else is the same. The second one is, it would be an emergency. And the resolution would specifically say that it must be passed by an affirmative vote of all the members. The resolution is adopted as a measure... As an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health and safety within Portage County. I mean, those are the additional things that are put in. Again, everything else is the same.
And wasn't this what we were doing in the first place? It's definitely a different...
The emergency was. Yeah.
But since then, we've learned something.
Okay. The pros and cons of emergency versus non-emergency is this. If you pass it as a non-emergency, it is subject to a referendum under Revised Code 305-31, which means that voters in Portage County could put a petition together within... Must put a petition together within the next 30 days. Must be within 30 days. Must be signed by about 4,000, little over 4,000, 10% of the last gubernatorial race voters, little over 4,000 people. And that petition would be filed with the... Ultimately, with the Board of Elections within 30 days. And they will now be able to vote on your resolution, whether to keep it or repeal it or revoke it. Okay? That's a one-shot. They have 30 days to file that petition. The vote would not take place until November of 2016 because it must take place at a general election and you're not within the 90 days to get in on this year's November ballot. So, this vote would not take place until November 2016 if it were a non-emergency resolution. And the tax would not be implemented for 2016 until that vote took place.
But if we would collect it in the meantime?
That's my point. You would not collect it in the meantime. Once that petition... Not until January of 2017 if it passed. Okay. So, that's the non-emergency. Okay? And again, that's a one-shot deal to get in on the ballot. The emergency level is, it would immediately be imposed. It would begin to be collected January 1, 2016. In this case, it is subject to a repeal vote, which means different code section, 5739-022. People, again, will put together a petition, same amount of voters, to be filed within 90 days of the general election. So, they would have all year to pass that petition around. Would have to be filed within 90 days of the November 2016 election. 90 days of the November 2016 election, and they can now repeal what you've put. In the meantime, you're collecting it for 2016, okay? If it passed in November 2000, let's assume, it passes in November 2016, you keep repealing it. The downside, well, maybe it's not an downside, is that same petition could be filed year after year while this tax is in effect. So if this is for five years, for those four or five years, that repeal petition could be filed every year.
Therein lies my very point. We have committed, we have promised, we're going to do something. This gives the electorate that have said, I don't have a chance to vote on it, that might doubt our word. If you don't do what you've told us we're going to do, then we can take matters into our own hands. To me, that gives validity to it, that's how I like my process.
So if a board comes in next year and says, I'm not spending it on administrative criminal services, then you're right, the voters could get together and say, well, then you're not spending it on the purpose that I wanted you to spend it on, I'm going to request a repeal.
You know, another real good point here is if we pass it as a non-emergency, we don't start collecting until January of 17?
If they file a petition within the next 30 days.
And that's, we need to collect it.
You want to start collecting, yeah. So the emergency is, you know, I guess there's pros and cons, there's...
It says in the, in the chapter on, from CCAO, it says that the tax cannot go into effect, this is for a non-emergency, cannot go into effect until approved by the electors at the next primary or general election.
Was it a primary? Well, okay, if it was not an emergency, then it could go on, you're right. I think it could go on in March of this year, of 2016.
So the pros and cons, if we do it non-emergency, we can't collect it until March of this year, assuming there was a referendum. If there was no referendum, it would go into effect in March.
It would go into effect...
Couldn't be March, because that's on the primary.
Well, it would be voted on March 15th. It would go into effect if it passed, probably, it's the beginning of the next quarter, April 1st? It only goes on, in effect, the beginning of each quarter of the year.
And does it help be unanimous?
June.
June.
If there's no referendum, it would start January. If there is a referendum and it got on the March...
And passed.
...election, it would start collections in June.
If it passed.
If it passed.
So the choices we have, if we do it regularly, then assume then that 30-day period that there's no referendum, it'd go into effect in January, and it would not, no opportunity for referendum for five years.
Correct.
If there was referendum and we get it non-emergency, then there would be a vote in April, I mean, in March, and it would, if it passed, if the referendum passed, we'd get no tax. If it didn't pass, then we would start April 1st, so...
June 1st.
June 1st. So my thinking is, if, there's some risk in doing an emergency, because every year it could lead to a referendum, whereas if we did it non-emergency, I think there would probably not be a referendum now, because those people who did the referendum last time really are very supportive of the tax now, and probably, I wouldn't think, would do the referendum. So I think it'd be fairly safe in doing a non-emergency.
Except Kathleen, you're talking about a sample of the people, the 162,000 people in this county. I am back to, there's no reason to impose a tax on a new one unless it's an emergency. So I would want it to be an emergency. So if there's not, wait a minute, if there's not a consensus, you're saying it doesn't matter?
If it's an emergency. All three of you have to vote in the affirmative.
Okay, because I'm going to support it as an emergency basis. So I don't know how that skews not going forward.
Well, I think, Kathleen, I understand your point, and believe me, I've thought about this a lot. And originally, I thought, you know, what if we get the tax one year, two years, and people get upset, and then they repeal it, and then we don't get the tax anymore? But I think it's up to the commissioners to make sure that that money is spent the way it should be spent, and the boards do change. And what if, what if for some reason the commissioners decide, we're not going to spend it the way we said we would? Don't you think the voters should have a right to say, well, then if you're not going to spend it the way you said, then you shouldn't have it?
Well, the idea that you stated is correct. However, people can get up a referendum to take it off regardless of whether we're spending it. Let's assume, I assume we will be spending exactly as we said. Let's assume we do that. That doesn't stop a group of people from getting a referendum and taking it off.
But you admit that we've got their support now, so why wouldn't we have their support if we're doing the right thing?
It may be different people.
Well, and we may be different people up here.
And then it gets back to just the people that were here, and there are many more people than those people that were here.
Of course, it's an emergency, we wouldn't be doing this if it weren't, but that doesn't mean we have to pass, the process that we use doesn't have to say that it's an emergency, that we can do a journal entry, that we believe it's an emergency, that's why we're doing it.
And a journal entry isn't...
And also earmark it at that point with the journal entry. My concern is that I think it's absolutely necessary, and I would like to do it in such a way that we can almost guarantee that we're going to have this money for five years. Otherwise, we're not going to be able to accomplish those things that we have planned. I just feel we're safer to do it with the non-emergency clause.
But if the journal entry has no...
It has no teeth enforcement.
It does have enforcement until it's changed.
Well, you only have one chance. As a non-emergency, you only have one chance to change it.
Change it, yeah.
As an emergency, you have four chances.
We're talking about, we're not talking about that, we're talking about the journal entry.
We're talking about all of it. Again, I think, we're not, I would not want to impose a tax, and that was my premise, unless it's an emergent situation, and this is an emergency. So I want to be able to declare that it is an emergency.
I agree.
Well, you can put forth whatever, whichever motion you want, either a motion as an emergency levy to, as an emergency to levy an additional tax of 1/4%, sales tax and use tax as 1/4% or as a non-emergency. I mean, that's completely up to you.
Great.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
Oh, right. Are you hiding Lenny's or Denise's?
Yeah, no. If I were, you would need the sales tax.
I think, I think it's in your court right now, because the way I understand it, if you pass it as an emergency, it requires all three votes, is that right?
That is correct.
Or it doesn't go into effect, period.
Right, I mean, it can't have...
And we can't let it not go into effect, I don't think.
So if all three of you are willing to vote for it as an emergency, then that's what you do. If not, then...
So how would you both like to proceed with the resolution?
I think it's in Kathleen's...
Well, I think there has to be a motion.
Right.
I think it is critical that we have the money. I feel we're much safer by doing it non-emergency. However, if the other two on this board think we're going to do an emergency, that's the way it's going to go. I mean, I just have one vote. I prefer the non-emergency for all the reasons that I've already stated, that I feel that is much more secure. My goal is to get the money for the services that we desperately need, and I, my goal is to get it for a five-year period.
If you would prefer to wait until Thursday to do this, I can pass the emergency draft resolution, pass the attorney for the tax commissioner and the CCAO rep one more time. I'll leave that up to you, I don't know if you want me to do that or not.
Oh, sure, I mean, it's...
You can apply those to Forreston, and then you can pass it on Thursday?
It's due.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this one, so we may have a problem with this one, is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think you have any, yeah, the non-em, the emergency, I don't think there's any problem, but I know neither the tax attorney, the attorney at the tax commissioner nor the CCO rep has seen the emergency.
Okay, okay.
So if that's the one you're heading towards, then I will make sure they see it.
Is that already sure?
Yes, yes.
Dotted the i's and crossed the t's and...
But Thursday, I think we need to.
For sure. All right. But I'm leaning towards the words of the seat, I just want to read them.
As long as there's no verbiage.
Not leaning, I mean, that's just, I feel compelled to do it. Okay, all right. Thank you for, you know, it was confusing, and thank you for clarifying what you've done. You've done a wonderful job of reducing it so I could understand it.
No, I reduced it so I could understand it, so I could explain it, so, okay.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything else, unless you do.
You've had two major, major hits here this week, the hospital and the...
Yeah, and the MOU, that's three.
Oh, the MOU, that's three.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm undefeated in my fantasy football team, so...
Ooh, that's the most important, that, right?
Exactly, exactly.
And then what about the Browns? Could you make the...
I have, yeah.
Pretty pathetic.
I have no Browns on my fantasy football team, which is probably why I'm undefeated.
Did I tell everybody about my football?
No.
Can I digress a moment?
Please.
Ready for this?
I'm ready.
Well, I bid on a football at the Celebrate Porch event. They had some wonderful things you could bid on, but they kind of were obstructed a little bit by the people coming in and out. So I went over and I looked, and they had a Cavaliers package, and they had a Cleveland Browns football. Now, the Cleveland Browns football was autographed, so I'm looking to see who signed it. Unbeknownst to me, I don't know who this person was, but it turned out to be a Billy Winn. Okay, say no more. So I thought, well, there was a very, very low bid on it. I thought, no, I'm going to bid on that football, it's a Cleveland Browns football. So I bid on it, and I was a successful bidder. Afterwards, Couchburner came up, he was the emcee from WNIR, and he said to me, I said, I don't know who this Billy Winn is, and he said, well, I hate to be the bearer of bad tidings, but he just got put on waivers.
Oh, is it?
Traded, and I said, you mean he got fired? He said, yeah, he got fired. So all my...
But you've got your football, right?
Well, I got my football, but Billy Winn is... So anyway, he said to me, I do a show at an NIR, and so does Bob Golick. If you let me have that football, I may be able to get Bob Golick's signature.
That would be cool.
I now am the proud owner of a football with not only Bob Golick, Bernie Kosar, and Hanford Dixon. I mean, we're talking the original Cardiac Kids.
Wow.
That's when I was a fan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's smart.
I have a back for it now, prominently...
That's a case and everything, so that no one...
My dogs shall not get their teeth...
No, no, no. That is very cool. Excellent. Good for you.
That was a digression, but you had to hear that.
No, that was a great story.
It's a great story.
That's a great story. Okay, thank you, I'll send out the...
Thank you, Denise.
And let you know...
Yeah, thank you.
And Mike Friesdick will be the one with the problems.
Okay, I don't think I have the email for the CCAO rep.
Red hole.
Yeah, maybe you could send that to me.
I could be on that email, because I pulled up his email, too.
I'll take a look, okay.
All right. Are we ready for human resources?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Todd is still here to talk about your add to the agenda number four. Do you want to talk, have any questions about that?
Are you here, do you?
Have you ever...
All day. This is a quick budget amendment. If the board would like to do it, it's fine if you don't want to, it can wait. Some health benefit payments that came evident that we need to modPO and there wasn't enough budget. If we can get this done today, it facilitates paying those faster.
Sure.
There's nothing out of the ordinary with the expenses, and there is, there's over $2 million in unappropriated certification. It's just trying to take some of that and get it to where we need it.
Sure.
Yeah. I was aware of it earlier this meeting, so that would be fine with me.
Motion to amend to the general fund, 2015 annual appropriation, resolution number 14-0942, adopted December 11, 2014.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call, please.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll be back, Todd?
Probably.
Okay, Janet, come on up.
Well, I don't have a formal agenda, I just want to see if you guys have anything for me. The only thing that I would ask, if you, you know, do you want me to do anything yet about the JFS director position, or, I don't know if it's the executive or open discussion?
I think we're kind of putting that on hold for right now.
Okay.
I would be eager to go ahead and advertise, but evidently there's other things being discussed.
You didn't need the...
I thought, because we had so many other issues, that we were going to let this go, let Kelly be the acting director.
I didn't know anything about that. I think we need to advertise as soon as possible. We're very vulnerable in this area, and...
As long as Kelly Joe's there, we're not...
No, we're not. We're Kelly Joe.
We're, oh, Job and Family Services, I'm sorry, confusing, Human Resources, I was thinking Human Resources. Yeah, I think we're fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'll wait until you guys...
Okay.
Let me know what to do, because right now I...
So you're not up here for us to sign this, this Corrigan or building, this is...
No, actually, I'm still waiting for him to call me back to see if he's coming in tomorrow to sign his offer letter.
Oh, he hasn't, oh, he hasn't accepted?
Well, he did on Friday verbally over the phone, but we, he was supposed to come in tomorrow, and he was to let me know a time that he's coming.
He's coming in Wednesday?
Yes.
Do he have any questions, or, I mean, I wish he would have.
No, he didn't. Yeah. No, he didn't. So I'm, yeah, because I had asked him to let me know a time, because I wanted to make sure in my office available. So I'm still waiting for him to confirm time.
Actually, it should be executive session, but...
Yeah, you're right.
Since we didn't mention the name, I don't know.
Yeah, but yeah, I didn't have any, anything formal, just wanted to see if I say anything for me.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you, Janet.
Okay.
Should we do resolutions?
Well, we have two add-ons to your...
Okay, sorry.
Shall we do that?
The first one we've done, have we not yet, was the second one is the...
That first one on here is Brian Kelly?
Yes, I meant we did this one.
Yeah.
All right, Brian Kelly, we got it in the department, Job and Family Services, use of the sixth floor. Evidently, while Brian Boykin had spoke with Brian Kelly, and this was okay for them to have those classes. Brian Kelly now has some concerns about much of the equipment and the number of people in and out. So actually, Devin mentioned this to me, and I think it's an excellent, an excellent suggestion, and perhaps we can ask Kelly Joe to come down, or see if she would be a member of this. Why don't we ask them to hire a security guard or someone to be on the floor, therefore fully negating...
So could they use the sixth floor if they had a security guard?
Well, I...
Could we have Kelly Joe come down and ask if that's...
The other thing is, shouldn't Brian have all of those computers in a secure location with a lock? I mean, that shouldn't be out in the hallway.
Well, I don't think there's a way to do that.
So we have, we have rooms down there, they help.
Well, I think they're in those rooms, I mean, I'm not sure, Kathleen, but, you know, I think that we can proceed.
Can we have Brian come, too?
Sure.
Well, you know, he also had other concerns, though, about inadequate restrooms and lack of drinking.
Right.
I mean, that's not going to, a security guard is not going to help that.
No.
But could we have him here, too?
Brian?
Yeah, Brian and Kelly.
Well, yeah, my understanding was that they were in agreement initially, but now Brian, and it may be that he has concerns as a result of someone prompting concerns.
Okay.
Well, he said in his, that there was 400 people, but I don't think they're all being trained at the same time.
Oh, no, no, I think that's in a month, right?
So as far as bathroom space and that kind of thing, it depends on how many, how many in one day. Okay, do you want to move on while we're waiting for the...
Yes, yes.
We had a request that the overflow parking for a person's Halloween party could, they could use our F lot. We, I can recall, we did that another time, there was a neighbor here on Meridian who had a graduation party for her son, and we permitted that, so...
And that turned out okay?
It turned out fine. I would think, perhaps we could just ask maintenance to, they'll have to leave that open, won't they?
We probably need her to sign a disclaimer.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
We dealt with the...
Okay.
Okay, yeah, we've dealt with fury. And number five is a typical number one.
Yeah, we did that one.
Resolution to amend. And we did the resolution to amend, so we're just waiting for Brian and Kelly Joe. And by the way, Jan Klevik is... Okay, Jan, Toby, also.
So, yeah, one and five are the same thing.
Should I go ahead and do the resolution?
Sure.
Okay. Motion to approve the Tuesday, September 29, 2015 bills, ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call, please.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, September 29, 2015 journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, we'll call.
Vicki?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Tuesday, September 29, 2015, denounce certification as presented by the county auditor.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Motion to amend resolution number 15-0758 to update the members of the Porch County Transportation Improvement District pursuant to chapter 5540 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion on the two that were, that were sent to us by the state? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the cash donations from a private individual organization and business for the Ohio Means Jobs Fair, Job Fair to the Porch County Job and Family Services.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion?
A $100 gift from Greater Akron.
Yes.
From Akron, sure.
All give it, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're probably going to thank you, after the Akron jury.
We're going to thank you after the Akron children.
Can we hold until she, they come? I have a, someone that wants to see me for a second.
Yes.
Do you want to recess for a few minutes? Recess?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to recess for a few minutes?
Well, recess for a couple of minutes.
Sure. I'll keep you up. Hey, Maureen.
Oh, okay.
We're all here.
Yes, we're all here. Brian, you had expressed some concerns about the training, not the training per se, but of the use of the sixth floor for the training of your...
Orientations with the jobs participants, yeah.
And it was my understanding, though, that previously, just so we have the everything in sequential order here, that Brian Boykin, I think, had spoke with you, and it was...
No.
I think he outreach, maybe, to...
He did not speak with me either. Oh. Oh, okay.
I think he outreach to the sixth floor, correct? Was it yourself and Zulin?
Well, it was like a month ago.
Right.
Stephanie emailed us about the use of 605, but she did not go into detail...
Yeah.
Until last Friday.
Right, okay.
Went to talk to Brian Kelly, make sure he knew what was going on, and unfortunately, it was...
Okay, so they, they want to wear it all, then?
I was not, and I was very upset when Brian called me about it, because I couldn't believe you were going to put 400 people there.
Well, not 400. There'll be, there'll be 40, 40 people, as I understand, right, a total of maybe 400 people during the entire month, right?
Approximately twice a week. Oh, three times a week, actually, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Fridays for the month of October.
Was I right in understanding there was, what, one, two, three, or four different rooms? Not just one?
I thought it was the...
I thought it was 605.
They also plan to use room 603 to have the 101 meetings with these clients.
Okay, it sounds to me like maybe we're not going to be able to do this. And I don't think there was any intent to, you know, to serve anybody's authority or...
Oh, we know that, Maureen.
Oh, no, no, I mean, no, seriously, I think we have...
Things going on.
No, no, but with, with, yeah, Board of Elections, that's the part I left out. With Board of Elections, it's necessary, not necessary, we don't have the use of room 11. So I think we probably, just thinking about that, thought, oh, this would be a good remedy. You know, again, I apologize that Brian and Janet weren't involved.
The only thing I did look into, I did talk further with the Board of Elections. They also have 40, some people...
Yeah.
That will be going through their training over the course of the month on their scheduled dates as well. And they'll have equipment set up, that they want to leave set up, in 111, so... But their schedule is pretty spread out as well.
So we don't really have any other room, do we? I mean, I was thinking downstairs on the third floor, I think it is, at the Health Department Hall, that we used to have meetings in?
I'm not sure, but I was going to say, I...
Is there a joint thing happening? I don't have to be aware of it?
No, I don't know the third floor.
Well, it was 3:59.
3:59.
But it's hard.
It's not big enough?
It's not big enough for 40 people.
We have a number of comps, smaller conference rooms. I'd hate to, I mean, we can divide the group up if we need to into two, and we'll make it work with what we have. We were just looking at the building and, you know, as a whole, and that was the secondary largest space.
Sure.
So, and I apologize if there are communication issues.
It's not necessary.
We did, we met with Stephanie Pringle yesterday morning. Stephanie was, was great in explaining everything to us and, and working with us, so...
Were you, maybe I've written on the ticket, were you going to suggest maybe that the Board of Elections use your floor?
Well...
Or that's not feasible either?
I was, I was, I was thinking of that, except when they mentioned, you know, the 40 people. I mean, I'm not even sure of 605, even if we leaned it out from wall to wall, and I'm not sure that with machines and everything that that would meet their needs well either.
Yeah, okay.
Is the training room, is it big enough either, is it, Brian?
I mean, yeah.
Back on three?
No, that's all.
With all the computers and stuff?
No, that's set up with computers. The only other area, there is a third floor conference room and, and budget management, but I'm not sure that that's well suited for 40 either.
Well, Kelly Joe, you said you can...
We'll make it work.
We'll make it work?
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Thank you so much.
Team effort, you're awesome. That's the Board of Elections, that's why. We usually, that's the room we usually use. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for working that out.
All right, we'll make it work.
I'm sorry.
That's exactly... SUV somehow.
Oh, okay. Okay, we're crisis, crisis averted, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, next is, I guess we can get back to discussion items?
Right.
And the first thing is, oh, was Todd Peet's rather, I thought, well...
I think he was very clear.
Very clear, yes, response to the zoning, model zoning for noise.
Actually, there was other correspondence that wasn't in our packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was from me. Some time ago, we talked about the frustration the community had concerning the injection wells, and I was told by someone from the state oil and gas place that there was zoning regulations that townships could have. And I, I don't have my correspondence there, but I typed in the section number of the code, and all it does is allows the townships to have noise ordinances, or resolutions, I guess, or regulations in the zoning code. They can do that, but even if they did that, they, in order to enforce it, they would have to have some equipment to be able to prove what desulfos it was. And I think the engineer, Nikki Morancey, indicated to us at some point that those trucks idling do not, probably would not rise to the noise level that would be set. But anyway, that would be the only thing that townships can do, is to do a noise.
Well, I thought Todd, Todd's references after he talked with Chris Moudry, I mean, he listed all that, the, the fact that idling would not come to, come to the purview of, what is it, the sound abatement? Like, if you go into Hudson, you'll see a posting there.
Yes.
What is that called? No air brakes? Is it air brakes?
Yeah.
Or something like that. Right, so, so there are very specific things that can be regulated. So, can we move on to Veterans Day? The Veterans Day agenda, if you read Deb's response that she got from Kent State, they are willing to do a flyover.
Yes.
With a, is it called a missing person?
In the missing man formation.
Yeah, I mean, how, how wonderful will that be?
Yes.
And when I read that, I was just saying to Deb, it prompted me to think, because we don't have a keynote speaker, if we could ask those two instructors from the university, or at least one of them, maybe one would come, and to offer some comments.
And I'm sure they would.
Yeah, one's a Vietnam veteran, and the other is, is it...
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
Marine, well, he's a...
Sorry to miss that this year.
So is that all right with both of you, if we can...
Sure, either of them.
Ask them if they would consider being speaker? Great.
Well, we should go over the agenda, since you're not going to be here.
Right.
Those places where your name is located, we could sort those out.
Whatever you were doing...
Leading the pledges and introduction of the veterans, is what I was supposed to do.
Would it be all right with you, Kathleen, to assume those?
Yes.
And we can talk about the other things. I think we're well set, but certainly, anyway, you want to change it.
Unless you wanted to do them.
No, I have, I think, then reading it, I thought, this doesn't seem like a second reason. Dead here, I've got too many, but that's fine. If you, if you don't mind taking out what they can't is going to do.
Would it be easier for Marie to stay at the podium and then do the National Anthem and the...
Yeah.
And do a couple of things, maybe just, so you're not going back?
So you're not going back?
All right. Whatever, yeah, whatever is conducive to having it flow smoothly, that's fine. Okay, the final thing here is the, I'm going to assume, is this an additional invoice?
Yes, invoice number two. And I think that, doesn't that take in the first invoice? I mean, no?
Yeah, it does.
Oh, it does, okay, all right.
It does.
I didn't mean to tell the truth.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's from the beginning.
And then is there something else coming? I mean, I read it, and I didn't...
No, that's it. I mean, unless we want to do something else.
This is a final. Okay, so we add this to journal entries that haven't been in full?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, that'll be fine. Information only, these were, if we can move on, Jack Medved's...
Oh, yes.
Letters and corrective actions for the people to appear to, or, or, I, I don't know that the community may be cited into court, but the...
Well, they probably would if they don't respond within like 21 days, I would think.
So there, again, there are information. I think that's it.
Did you see they referred to David?
Oh, I did not.
You did David Grant.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and Denise didn't talk about that at all, did she?
No, she didn't. No, I meant to ask her about that, too.
Yeah, I, I did also. Being that we were going to certainly accommodate the request, I thought I was, I thought it was a little, I couldn't understand why we're being sued. I guess just because we always are.
I think it's just to cover the bases, but I'm sure we have been more than cooperative. We would be happy to do whatever.
There's no question we've been cooperative. Yeah, but, so, all right. Anything else? No? That's it?
Nikki, did you want to talk about vacation? Oh, yes, I was thinking of, I'm not leaving town, but the week of the 26th of October, I'll be available, but I'm not coming in the office by 12:00. If there's something that comes up that I need to come in, I will.
Okay.
And then Kathleen, you have one with two. Did you want me to reschedule staff needs,